We started to call the meeting to order for the FY 2023-2024 Draft Budget and Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, I guess that's me. So I kind of wanted to start us out, I know you guys have your back to the TV here, but I wanted to start us out and talk just a little bit about our millage rate breakdown and what that means as far as the taxes that we collect as a city here and what stays where. So our millage rate is not changing from last year. There was an increase in taxable value, but the millage itself is not going up.
And I had a question on, so how is that? Because doesn't Headley say when the taxable value increases, the millage rate has to decrease to offset?
It does, yes, but that is something that walking through the worksheet that they give us to do with that and figuring out the numbers on that, it's already been clarified through Oakland County that the numbers here are correct.
Okay.
Because we're at one. So that was the number we were told to use.
So our MRF was at one, is what you're saying?
Yep. So our total taxable amount for the city is, our mills are 24.1266. Going down to the next slide here, you guys don't have that in yours, I was just doing this as an additional thing. I wanted to be able to show, and this will be in the actual budget book. If you look over in the fiscal year, the breakdown of all the numbers, the bottom line there in green, our assessed values are at $273,880,210. However, our taxable values are $97,000 less than that because of Headley. So that really is, you can see the lines here where the taxable values and the assessed values, we're not keeping pace and we lose money every single year on that. Something else I wanted to do, again, the top three there, you have the residential or the homestead and then the non-homestead rates side by side for the millage. Going through that, it shows dollar for dollar what's staying in the city. We're roughly around 45 cents out of every dollar that we keep here in the city. Everything else goes out to Oakland County Operating, Oakland County Parks and Rec, Transit, ISD, the Community College, and then the schools through the state education tax, school operating, school debt supplemental, and their sinking funds. And for every dollar, again, that's kind of the breakdown that you see in there. Just wanted to make everybody aware that even though we collect taxes in the city, not everything that is collected stays in the city. And there's the breakout again, 45% is for the city, 36% is for the schools, 3% for college, 6% ISD, 10% for the county. And the HCMA, Zoo Authority, and Art Institute are all less than 1%, so they show up as zero although they're a little bit more than that. And then I'll get into this as we're going through into our funds. So our general operating fund for this year is, the revenues are at $5,028,719. Expenditures are at $5,136,999, which leaves our general fund in a deficit of $108,280. I think I told you guys when I first started doing all the budget stuff, I was up over $500,000, well over $500,000, and then started cutting things and scoping back on things and I've been able to get it down to $108,280. I don't know where else to take from in order to cut those expenditures. Major Streets-
Before you go on to that, I'm sorry, I've got a question right off the bat here. So I have a problem with this $2 million ending fund balance number. To me, that just does not seem correct at all because the budget from last year projected that the end of this fiscal year would have a $985,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $985,000 ending balance. And even if you look on the chart on page three and you look at the estimated, you know, we're estimating the ending fund balance to be at 1.47, which still to me seems high. But then we've got a starting balance here, again, on page three, of 2.1 million. So unless something major happened that I didn't, don't remember, it just seems like that number is grossly off. I would expect that number to be under like $900,000.
Yeah, I think the 105, 238 in the actual, if you turn the page there, up at the top, that should come over to that column. The $1,005,238 up at the top.
Yeah.
That's more in line, so I'll move that over.
More in line to go under projected?
Yes. Because we're still, we still have, this is where we're at right now as of 3/31. That's the actual fund balance. Is $1,052,38 for general fund. So with the additions that we'll be gaining, a portion of that is why I'm not sure if we will have the actual deficit, if we're lining things up where we're at in the general fund. I know that we still have some things that we haven't transferred in out of other accounts into the, to the general fund yet, so that will help offset some of that, but-
Yeah, but we just need to make sure that that, whatever, I mean, if it's a mistake on the spreadsheet, fine, move it over, but we just need to make sure that that number's correct. Because the, I mean, to me, the biggest thing that we have to do is figure out how much of a deficit we can live with. And, you know, to use this as an example, you know, a $2 million general fund, $100,000, it's like, fine, but if it's $800,000, then it's a bigger issue. So I think we need to make sure that those are correct.
Yeah, so that ending fund balance is way off to-
For which one?
The projected for 2023. General fund beginning fund balance and-
On page three?
Ending fund balance. I don't know what page it is.
Yeah, I mean, they tie together, so they're both off. And then the other, probably getting a little bit ahead, but then the other, the other fund balances still seem off to me.
The streets?
The streets, and they don't tie to what's on page three or on the detailed breakouts further down in the packet, but-
Just for the streets, the 929, 370. And I'm no accountant, but I thought that our, the bond is supposed to be covering this. So we shouldn't be in the hole for anything for when it comes to the streets.
Right, so there was, in the detailed section, you know, I don't know, what is 16, page 16, 17, whatever it is, where it shows the expenses, it's 1.1 million of the, I think 1.5 on local was all bond, the rest of the stuff was the normal run-of-the-mill kind of local stuff that we do every year. So I would expect that that 1.1 million would be fully covered by revenue being transferred in. So that's on page-
15? Yeah. Second local?
Yeah, so page 15 and 16, so 15, the revenue, shows the revenue about $650,000, but the expenses are 1.5 million. So that 1.133, second line from the bottom, which is the bond dollars, I would expect that that would be completely covered by revenue from the millage. Because what it looks like right now is on both the major and the local funds, it looks like we're using non-millage funds to pay for millage work, which can't happen. I know I jumped ahead, but-
You did, and you're all over and I'm trying to keep up where you're at. What page you said 16?
So on page 16, on 16, the second line up from the bottom.
The 1.1-
1.1 million, that's all bond money, you know, millage money, millage expenses, I should say. So those should be completely offset by revenue from somewhere. And if they're not, that means that we're pulling out of the local fund to pay for millage expenses. And then same thing in the major category as well. So, but I can bring it up again when we get to that. I just kind of, it was a natural jump from the general fund, but sorry.
Okay, so major streets and local streets, obviously I'll need to redo those, those figures to make sure that we have the correct stuff in there. Water and sewer, they combine together, again, with all of the sewer stuff that we've had pulling in from that, that's on page 20 and 21. So there is scheduled for this coming year, money to be transferred in from the capital bond. And capital expenditures, I spoke with Scott today about that, it's in the CIP. It's on page 21.
I think my page number's a little different. What does it say in the upper left, upper?
I feel like I just need to skip this front page and we start here and we just go through because otherwise we're going to be flipping back and forth and back and forth and back and forth.
Which page are you starting with, the number?
Page three. So obviously reflecting the change in the general fund balance, we have operating expenses of $3,020,630. Refuse collection is $453,000 or $453,000. Administrative fees is $90,000, tax penalties, we're estimating at $35,000, which gives us total taxes of $3,598,695. State shared revenue is at $499,818.
And is that the, is that the updated number from the state?
Yes, it is.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is. Total resources available, will have to be adjusted because the number up at the top is not correct. Revenues needed, which is adding everything in the green above that minus the $7 million, is $5,028,719. Expenditures, we show at $5,136,999, which leaves us in a deficit of $108,280. Major streets again. Projected is $844,928. Local streets, $650,46. Water is $2,928,552. And sewer is $2,784,001. Capital acquisitions is $41,700.
What happened, that went up $324,000 from what we got on Friday?
The, which one, I'm sorry?
Sewer.
Sewer.
The sewer, okay. Again, that was jumping into-
I would like to register a complaint. Spent hours on this over the weekend and now it's all different. So this is really not the way to properly go through a budget of this size.
I'm gonna have to agree with Karen on that one because, I mean, we can go through it, but I'm almost to the point of wanting to reschedule it. Because to have an hour and a half before a meeting, I just don't think that gave us time to go through it. But, I mean, we can go, it's up to you all what you want to do, but-
No, I agree with you, but we're here, so we might as well just plod through. Like, I don't know what you guys think.
But it's not, I mean-
It's harder. I did the same thing.
The numbers aren't correct. I had questions, I had things circled, but now it's all different, so.
Yeah, I had the same thing, I printed mine out and then just had to copy the notes over, rushed to do that, but-
And I didn't even see this till I got here because I had other things going.
And, I mean, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but for all the people that work and just, you know, truthfully, if I was not alerted that something came out, I really wouldn't have even looked at my email, to be quite truthful. I mean, I'm just, you know, from what my day looked like. So I'm just saying for you all, we can go through this or what do you want to do? I'm putting it on, I know we're here, but it's going to be longer for the fact that I don't-
It is probably better to reschedule it then.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Unless anybody has any pressing questions right now?
Well, I can go over some stuff that-
Do you want to bring up some issues at least today that can be addressed?
From the budget perspective, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then we, if everybody will take out their calendars again for us to look at. Go ahead, who wants to start?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, you start, no, I'd go through my notes.
On page, when you get to the water fund, there are a couple things here, and these haven't changed from the-
Which page are you on?
So this page right here, which is, mine is 17, so it's the one that says water rate review up at the top.
Part of fund rates?
Yeah, so in the middle table on the revenue side, so what this, what this is showing is that, what this table shows is that the revenue from the different sources, so up top, you've got the various components of the rate, you've got the SAKLA rate, the city rate, and the capital rate, and it breaks it down. So for example, where it says later village rates, that's the city component times the 18,000, roughly 19,000, 19 million actually, units or cubic feet that we're expecting to sell. So that comes out to the 327,767. Then B, I'm sorry, that's on my own, where it says capital improvement, where the 175,658, that's the capital component times that 19 million. But when you go up to the first line at the top, that's supposed to be just the SAKLA. So it's supposed to be the 18.76 times the 19 million. But what that, what it really is, it's the 18.76, which is the SAKLA component, plus the city component.
Oh, it's the two of those?
It's the two of those together. So that's actually overstated, so we've double counted in this, the revenue from the city side. So the city is essentially represented twice in there. And I went back and looked at prior budgets just to verify that I wasn't-
It's represented twice under the 327,67.
Because it's included here and it's included there.
Okay.
So at the bottom, where you show the total revenue of 1.5 million, that's actually $327,000 overstated, so it's actually 1.2 million. Now, I don't think this number, I kind of looked through it, I don't think this number carries forward anywhere else in the detailed tables, but it is overstated.
Okay.
And then one, two, three, four, five pages later, this one, the water and sewers.
Twenty page, 22.
Yeah, so 22, is it 22 in years two?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So this is, this is showing the minimum, minimum water bill and the minimum sewer bill. So we bill by the 100 units, the rates are reflected in the, sorry, we bill by 100 cubic feet units, whereas the billing that we just went through a second ago is in the 1,000. So the minimum bill is, it's not $45.69, it's $4.56. So multiplying that by four units, it's $18.28. And then you add up the other, the $2.93, the $10.70, so that comes up to $32.91. So for a minimum of four units.
And then the sewer added?
And then the same thing, same thing with the sewer. So it should be four times $8.73, which comes out to $34.95, and then the total is 67.86.
Okay.
Yeah, so those numbers are overstated.
Hope so, we want $150 a month bills.
Yeah.
Can I jump on that page too?
Sure.
The CIP surcharge, the $10.70 that residents, that's correct, correct?
Correct.
And it is CIP or it's a CIB? CIP.
Yeah. B.
It's the capital improvement bond, the SIP is the other thing we're supposed to go over. So it is a CIB?
CIB, actually, yeah.
Okay, that's my question, because I'm thinking if we're collecting all that money to do all this CIP throughout this, why are we pulling it from a bond if we have the money set aside? Okay, so thank you, that answered that.
Anything else?
Not that's-
Barb, you have something you want to bring up?
Anybody else on the water and sewer? And I was asking the same thing, like, how did that water and sewer bill jump so high? Mine was a couple questions, still, just on page five, I don't know if it's the same as this, which is four on the new one, I guess?
It's a summary of expenditures?
General fund, other revenues?
Is it, oh, that's what it is, that's the best. Okay, gotcha, so it's on page four.
Yes, oh, it is page four, correct. Fiscal year 21, 22, we brought in 172,000 in building permits? And now it go, and now we're, you don't anticipate, I'm wondering what the heck was going on that year that we have like none projected for these, or barely any.
COVID, people were doing construction.
Oh, they were during COVID?
They were at homes, they were doing projects and pulling permits.
Do you see us ever getting back to that number?
We'll try and get COVID again.
No, I mean-
Only unless the big buildings up down South and Road permits, I can't see us, you know, because a lot of it's just home improvement.
This was residential permits, not commercial?
Oh, it's, oh, building permitsism.
Everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
What was the other cap that's on that?
I have a question on that same page, if we should do it that way or no?
Yeah, if we can stay on page.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
Dog and cat licenses, we have revenue of $1,100, isn't that what we turned over to Oakland County?
We still collect here and it goes to Oakland, it's not paid in, it's not a direct thing. They come here and they pay, and then that gets turned over to them. Do we, we collect a portion of that here or does that all go to Oakland?
We collect everything and it all goes to the county, yeah.
So that really wouldn't be revenue for us?
Well, it's revenue, it comes in, but then it goes out.
Is it reflected in the expenditures?
Oh, okay, I saw this one.
Is it in here somewhere?
Yellow bolded lines?
So, wait a minute, before we move on, Laura, you asked Karen-
Is that in, is it, is the offset in there somewhere?
I don't see it. On here, I don't see it.
It probably should be under a liability account, not a revenue account. Because a liability is money that comes in that goes out that doesn't belong to the city. So it probably should be moved. But since this is our first year doing this, it was put in as revenue last year because that's when we decided we were going to go with the county and we didn't start going with the county until like August or September, I think it was, so.
I would finish with page four.
Community garden revenue?
Still page four, right, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, still same, I'm sorry, yes, still same, page four.
It's for the plots up in the garden.
Right, I understand, but why, we haven't had anything for a couple years? Why is that now projected at $1,800?
We've had money, and we had money last year coming for that one.
I was gonna say, I thought that they did it last year also.
Yeah, we've got it budgeted, so.
Oh, so nothing has come in this year?
The actual year, the actual is? The actual for 21, 22 was $1,800.
Right.
And we budgeted $1,800 for this year.
Right.
We're just starting to get the money in now.
Yeah, they're selling plots this year, so.
Yeah, they're just starting to buy their plots right now.
It's a timing thing.
Yeah.
Are there plots available?
You would have to-
Sandra Gross?
Question, police charges for services, same page, what is that? That's police, that's for their ticket, their accident reports that they get. They get very little money in there from the, like, from the, it's not their court fees, but it's restitution, they get restitution, so that goes into that account. Any impound of cars, releasing of impounded cars, I think it's $25 per car that has, anything like that. That's all, anything the police department collects revenue on, it goes into that account. Except for their district court fees, that's in a separate account by itself.
Okay, and then you asked, somebody asked about the yellow bolded. Down here, the unearned revenue, the reason that I highlighted that is we have it in this fiscal year for the $200,000, and I touched on that last week, that that's actually the ARPA money that came in right at the end of June last year. So that will have to be amended at the end of the year to take it off from the budget for this year, and I didn't include it going forward because we're not collecting anymore.
I was just curious, some of them, I wasn't quite sure why they were young. So when we walked through it in detail, whenever we rescheduled for, I could ask each, the individual questions at the time.
Well, then she did, like, liability insurance premiums, that's because we don't pay that until like June, and Sue didn't know that.
Yeah, I was asking, those were my highlights to Pam, okay, what does this mean?
Got it.
Why, why haven't we spent any money on this? Well, it's a thing that we get in June that we pay it, so.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
It's just timing on things that come in. Or we have to pay out.
Yeah.
Karen, were you done on that page? Karen?
Yeah, I didn't read on that page.
Anyone else for questions?
Next, page five.
Okay.
First two things-
Sumories of expenditure?
Yep, government services and administration, actual amounts are about half of what projected is. We're going to get that much in three months?
What did you say, I'm sorry?
If you look at the actual figures for 3/31/2023, government services, $337,832. Projected for next year is $643,700.
In the government-
Services?
Services, we don't have all their tax money yet.
Oh.
Our tax money hasn't come in. The settlement was done in March, but they didn't get us settled in time to get the money in April.
Yeah, but this is expenditures.
But this is expenditures, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Right, well, you see what's budgeted too, you know, 781, 690. So the actual, that's where we're at, the estimated, we're trying to give an estimate.
That's what I'm saying, what is, what's going to be coming up that's going to-
The opportunity.
Double that amount in three months?
I'm just trying to stay within the other years that have been budgeted. You know, a budget is, even though you set a budget every year, you want to stick as closely to that budget as you possibly can. It's still, for lack of a better term, it's a living document, something that you can amend, that you can change, but you still have to give projections of where you think the spending or revenue will be at. So that's what that difference is in that, just trying to land in a happy medium between what we've been spending and what has been spent previously, you know, where we're at this fiscal year and-
So we may have over budgeted, is what you're saying?
Right, we may have over budgeted that.
Quite a bit, okay.
And that's true in any of those expenditures, so.
Administration goes up?
Correct. And administration, that can cover wages and salaries, that can cover-
Elections.
Elections, elections are going to be expensive this year, in the coming year.
Oh, elections is in the government system?
And we're trying to be prepared because we don't know with having to have the doors open for nine days in advance, what all that's going to entail or the cost that will go with that. So. Other questions?
Anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, it would be nice if they could come down with their final rules already.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that, were you at that, can't remember, were you at that session at Cap Town? Yeah, because they were talking about like, how do you, do we have to have 24-hour security in there? Because you're not putting them away at the end of the day, so anybody could access them. So it's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of costs that are still coming.
Under the expenditures, when it comes to the 2% raises, this is a COLA raise or it's just for a 2% salary increase?
It's, if it's COLA, it would be a lot more than that, this is just- It's, if, if it's COLA, it would be a lot more than that, this is just cutting to try to save money where we can.
So the one thing that we have been talking about, I think we did it last year, and I, I wanna put it on the table, is that we talked about merit increases opposed to just automatic salary increases? Thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I've always been a proponent of merit increases.
I mean, um, this year, just, um, I think everyone has been doing what they have to do to, you know, make the city stay afloat. But I think that when it comes to us being in what I'm looking at for this budget, I think we have to kind of tighten our belts, and I think that when it comes to the salary increases, that they should be based off of merit, performance reviews, something to that extent, opposed to just automatic. And this is something I wanted to just put on the table for the council, just to see what the thoughts were.
I agree, the last time it was five percent across the board, and there was no, you know, nothing tied to it, so we, you know, the position we're in, we can't afford to, to do that. Not that we don't, you know, want to pay our employees and be fair and, you know, all those kinds of things, but, um.
That far as I'm, it's not a reflection of how we feel about the employees or anything, but it's just we're looking at this budget. I just feel as though we need some reasons behind it.
I, I just wanna caution council, I think when you start looking at trying to reduce staff salaries to offset expenses, you're on a slippery slope there, because if you didn't have the staff here to do the work, you know, they take the brunt of so much stuff here.
I think we fully, I think we all fully understand what it is for day-to-day operations, I mean, and most of us operate businesses outside of the city, so we understand, we understand that. But the fact is, is that, um, the performance to the pay is not, for me, and this was something very hard, where I did not want to bring this up, but the complaints that they've been only escalating, and it's escalating not just from residents anymore. And so to me, it's where, are we, and I'm just gonna pull the Band-Aid out, do we, do we, uh, pay, or do we give increases for performances that are subpar, from what our residents are looking at? And as, as a resident also, do we give out increases, where I know in the business world, for me, is that you're not getting an increase unless you can prove what you've done, and I know that that's how government has been in the past, of you get an increase every year, but to me, it's all hands on deck, and I'm not feeling all hands on deck, that everybody should be getting an increase. That's what, I mean, that's me getting the calls, the emails, the text message, the, the in-person, you know, beat downs that I get from people. And honestly, and I'm not, and this, I'm trying to try to sound really, we're doing it for free, showing up, and I'm just like, I'm about to get on the soapbox, I just feel like it's all hands on deck, we show up and we do this work, and I think that everyone else needs to start to kind of show their work too. And I'm not trying, and I'm not saying that you all have not been there, you have, you're doing a phenomenal job as much as you can, but we have to figure out.
There are some missing pieces.
There's some, we gotta do something, unfortunately. And so I wanted to put it on the table, I'm not saying this is all you have to do, but this is my opinion only, and, um, that's something we can discuss either now, or we can discuss in the next meeting. But unfortunately, that's a sore spot that we, we gotta discuss, so.
I think it is worth discussing, only because, I mean, everywhere else you have to get a merit raise, I mean, I have to do merit to get a raise myself, so, and I go through hell too, so. I don't know, I mean, it's something to discuss, just, and maybe it doesn't have to be concrete, maybe it's until we get back on our feet with the budget. Something we can discuss.
Well, it's hard to justify to residents who don't have a situation like that.
I'm just curious how we jumped up a hundred thousand in the police department, almost a hundred thousand, why is that such an enormous jump in salary?
It's contractual, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, contractual, nothing we can do on that one.
So it's not hiring more, it's not because they need to hire more?
I think they have more staff than what they did, but they had vacancies, and it, it's not that they weren't budgeted for that amount, but it's contractual, and the union contracts is what we're obligated, so we can't change that.
Right, and the, the, you know, this is something that was misunderstood in years past too, is the increase in number of officers was actually a savings, because what we were doing
Paying lots of overtime.
Was paying overtime, which was a lot more expensive for the same amount of times, and now we have full-time employees. Yeah, so, trying to reduce the, 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 the part-time overtime off, uh, part-time overtime hours.
But going back to this, I think also if we do more of, and I, I think I put it in the goals and objectives, is to make sure, and it might be, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but to make sure everything's right-sized. And what I mean by right-sized is making sure that, understanding what everyone does, making sure that every aspect for the city operations is covered, I think that we just need to dive a little deeper in that, just, just, instead of just doing the.
Well, I, I think a lot of the stuff that happens is because we don't have
Right.
the staff numbers we need to be able to do the work that is put upon us, and that's where things get not completed, they get started, they get put aside because something else takes priority over that, and right-sizing, in my mind, would mean we need to hire a few more people to be on.
And I'm not saying that that might not be right, but the fact is, is if you're coming to council and you want to have an increase, you have to, like, like you said in, in elementary school, show the work of why you think that's, that they need the increase, or why we need to hire more people. I mean, and that's, I mean.
And I don't know that we've set the priorities, I think perhaps the priorities are off on what is important to residents and what, you know, priorities might be in this building. I don't, we didn't, we haven't gone through this and said, where do we want to spend our money? I mean, we have a thousand dollars for youth activities, that's pathetic, that is pathetic. But we're increasing training by two thousand dollars, like, a thousand dollars for good kids, like, that's ridiculous. So we, we haven't gone through and said, you know, what are the priorities, where do we want money to be spent?
So one of the things that council also needs to strongly consider in this, we've been working bare-bones, bare minimum staff, not even enough to get us by, Pam's been working ridiculous hours doing three jobs at one time, and working as interim city manager during a lot of that. You can't continue to do that to staff and expect them to want to stay here. Besides Pam and Scott McKee, that have twenty-some years here, everybody else has less than five years in this building.
So one thing I would tell you is that, again, being the one person on council that's been here the longest for twelve years, I, I get that, I totally understand that, but again, it is showing, you have to show what is needed, saying on a regular basis that we're short-staffed, I get it. But we need to see where we need to put somebody, what needs to be backfilled, is it Parks and Rec, is it the, um, water billing? It's just about, it's just about showing what's needed and kind of peeling the onion back and, and.
Out of Parks and Rec or water billing, you need somebody in water billing. Parks and Rec is, it's an important part of what we do, but the city won't stop operating if we don't have Parks and Rec.
So then for the Parks and Rec person, then tell me what, for the thousand dollars, as for youth, how is that, how is that connected then? You know how?
Those are things that when we put on events, things that can be pulled from, such as if you have the bounce house stuff, if you have whatever events, um, I've been talking with some of the residents, yeah, Santa Claus, the Breakfast with the Bunny, those types of things, that money can come out of that, that's youth.
Eleven dollars was spent up to three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, so.
Well, it may not have been put into the right account.
I think a lot of it came out of the citizens, community, or the citizens' account in Parks and Rec.
But again, if coming to council right now to try to approve a budget, this is all the stuff that to me would need to be kind of ironed out beforehand.
But we don't have the staff to do all of this, is what I'm trying to tell you.
I mean, I.
Council's gonna have to make a decision to either cut services or cut staff, and if you keep cutting staff.
We haven't cut, we haven't cut staff.
But we don't do anything to put money in the budget to be able to bring more staff in, we wanted, you guys wanted to hire a communications person.
No. It was brought to, it was brought to us about hiring a communication, um, person. Now, all I'm asking is just to show the work, and then unfortunately, which I do know how everyone has worked overtime to, to make these things happen, I'm just asking just to show the work, I mean, it, it's show what we need, show where the shortage is, show where the, um, staffing shortage is, show, um, kind of like, if we have this person in, how this is gonna relieve this person from doing this. That's how I want it, that's how I wanna see it, is where I understand what every single person in the administration, what they do, what is needed, what gaps need to be filled. Because, to, again, to get this, to me, it's all hands on deck and figuring out where we have to tighten them all up, and it's uncomfortable, I mean, I, I'll be the person that, you know, to follow on the sword for it, it's something I did not want to come here and say that whatsoever, because I really appreciate everything that everyone's doing here, but the fact is, I also live here, and this kind of budget, I just, I, this is not how I work in a, a, a day-to-day basis. I would love to get a two percent increase, just because that, it's the new year, and, but that's just not reality, reality, hate me if you want, but I'm just, if, if I don't say it, believe me, you have residents that are saying it, and they're gonna call us and they're gonna say it to us.
Well, and last year, we wa, we needed an assistant treasurer, we have an assistant treasurer, what, has that not had any impact?
She's still in training.
And we, I mean, we still have to get somebody on board for you, you know? It, it's a lot that, we have to not just do this budget, but it's also pre-planning for staffing, and that's what I would like, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, before we, you know, piggybacking, the conversation that the three of us had in one of our prep meetings, when I gave you that document of the things that had slipped through the cracks, if you remember, I prefaced that by saying, you know, these things are because we don't have staff, enough staff.
But there's still the demand to have it done, and the reason it doesn't get done is because we don't have the staff to do it.
Right, I, I get it, I get it, and, and that was my point, is, you know, we don't have the staff to do these, you know, do the things that were on that list.
But I get evaluated that those things don't get done.
Right, hang on, hang on, let me, let me finish. So, so the, the, the point that I made back then, and I think is what Kelly is saying now, and Karen as well, is, is that what I think we need you to do is, is to step back, and I think, I, I think that was the first time I ever said right-sizing in that, this context, was step back and look at, you know, what is it that we need? I mean, how many staff do we need, you know, do we need one more person, do we need two more, do we need ten, do we, you know, do, you know, what, what do we need to be able to, you know, get, get to the point where we're not dropping things, and things aren't falling through the cracks, and because people don't have enough time to answer, and we're always dealing with the hot potato. So that was kind of what, personally, what I was kind of looking for, was to, to get a sense of that, and, and now is the perfect time to do that, and we still have another month, you know, in, in the budget cycle, you know, I mean, if you could come back and say, we need these two people in order to, you know, because I think all of us will, will, will agree, I'm sorry, I say, all of us will agree, that, you know, we don't want residents feeling like they're not having their concerns addressed, and if, and if it, you know, if you come back and say, all right, we can handle this problem with a, a few tools and, say, two more staff, well then we can then look at the budget now and say, all right, well, what can we cut? You know, all right, let's, let's get rid of some dollars in training, let's get some, rid of some dollars here, and see how we can make that happen. But we can't make that happen if we don't know what it is that, that you need, you know what I mean?
But we haven't set the priorities, maybe there's something they're doing that's taking a whole lot of time that nobody really cares about, and doesn't matter in the community. I mean, that's, that's, that's the piece. We talked, I mean, we should have been in January asking, what are the priorities of this council and residents, and what, you know, where is our, where do our resources need to go, and then what do we need to do to, um, meet those priorities and expectations? I mean, I, I don't know, we had more employees here than we had, I came across an old, your town, our town, whatever it used to be called, and, you know, we have more staff here than ever, if you take away the DP, SDPW department. So, again, yeah, there's a lot more paperwork, yeah, there's a lot of things that have changed since then, but we still are here for residents, that's, that's what all of the things that all of us do are about, for the residents.
And everything we do at the city is for the residents, it's not just. And we have a lot of things that we do every single day that are requirements that we have to do, and the reason we don't get to other things is because we're focused on getting those things that we have to complete accomplished, and when we can work on the other things, we do that.
Those are mandated things from the state, or what, what are you talking about?
Yes, there are things that we have to report, things that are for the city, all kinds of things, yes.
I, I think I did say that things have changed and there are different requirements, but again, we haven't had, it's almost two years that I've been on this council, we have not had a conversation about what are the priorities of this community. Last year came at this time, we were over budget, Pam went back, cut things, we had a conversation the night that we were passing the budget about what was cut and, you know, what you.
We had a budget, we actually had the same budget workshop, no one said anything in that budget workshop. So, I mean, I gotta back, I have to push back on that one, because we did have an opportunity for that, and we did also have a goal setting that this is probably the most we've had a conversation in the two years that we've been together. So, I mean, we can go back, and, and, I mean, I, I think this is the regular drumbeat of what I've been saying, is we can keep going back and saying what it was, what we didn't, and all that, is what we really need to do is figure out what we're gonna do now. And so if there wasn't priorities set before, we have an opportunity now to set priorities, if it wasn't something, you know, if you don't feel like we went through line by line for the budget before, here we are, and we can go through line by line for the budget now. So, I mean, my concern really is for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, whatever has happened in the past, I'm totally willing and, and wanting to just let that go, and let's move forward to see what we can do.
But the same thing was said last year, so, you know, we should have been starting talking about these things
But we didn't, so here we are.
In January, we said, said the same thing last year.
And so we gotta really talk about what we're gonna do now for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, how we're going to make sure that, um, the operations of the city is up to par and up to standards for the residents, and I think that that, we lose a lot of time and then, and energy talking about what was not done.
Because they aren't, that, those needs aren't being met, and that has been the same story for the last time.
So here we are now, so let's talk about what we can do now, moving forward to project for twenty-three, twenty-four, and what we can do. We already agreed that, you know, we need to have another meeting regarding this, but I really just want to do a deep dive to make sure that going forward, we're functioning better than what.
Are we gonna be talking about raises, or gonna be talking about increasing memberships and meetings?
Whatever you want to talk about that deals with twenty-three, twenty-four, so we can, I mean, this is the opportunity, and we had this opportunity before, but I really hope that we all take it and really talk about it, not diminishing the person who's doing whatever, but talking about the meats and potatoes of the budget. And if you don't want to do it now, I mean, we can do it at the next meeting, because with this, this, um, we need to give people the time to go over that, um, so.
Didn't we set another meeting up, what was that, it was Saturday?
June third, and that's for the goals and objectives.
And Jill is not able to facilitate that for us.
I personally think that, um, someone that knows how to facilitate a meeting, period, or how to function with goals and, you know, to keep people on track.
She did recommend a few other people to reach out to, so I will do that.
And are there people that would volunteer to do it?
No.
So I think that we need to find someone that knows how to facilitate a, uh, meeting, which I think that, I mean, maybe this is when you send a SOS out to the residents to see who does this for a living, who's willing to give their vol, to volunteer their time to help move a meeting forward for goals and objectives. To me, and what I did say earlier, this might be a spending halt, in my mind, we're at a, at a halt of spending extra until this. In my mind, we are at a, at a halt of spending extra until this, that's, you know, my mind. I mean, there's some people that I, I can think of off the top of my head, that might be, you know, that are teachers, that are, you know, professors, that might be willing to, um, facilitate a meeting. Which technically, everyone around this table should be able to facilitate a meeting and move forward for goals and objectives and training.
There's a difference between facilitating a, a meeting and, and, you know, getting what you need out of it.
And objectives and, and so forth, so.
Pulling stuff out of people.
I mean, I get the, trust me, I get the difference, but I'm just saying, paying somebody else outside, I don't think that is the, is necessary to do that.
Well, we would've been paying Jill, right?
That's what I'm saying. Just a thought, that's not, you know, I'm totally opening the floor to what everyone else thinks, I just. If you don't, then we'll pay for somebody, but, but it's our game, that's.
Just, I guess just see what you can find, see if you can find somebody who.
I think that we, uh, everyone around the table, I bet you know somebody that knows how to do it, so. What else? Because, I mean, the fact is, do we keep going through this now, or do we pause, do we put it on pause, and look at our phones and figure out, we have to have, what was it, eighteen hours before you can, it has to be posted? So that means that even if you try it. And Monday we have, is our actual meeting meeting.
It has, it's eighteen hours, yeah, so it could be tomorrow night even.
Not on, not on this schedule. Sorry, I, I mean.
And I'm glad.
And it couldn't, because I need time to work on this stuff.
So, I mean, the only thing I can think is that, uh, make the Monday meeting very light, and, um, do it at that time, so it's also, um, yeah, make it, I don't know, I remember we have a lot of stuff that's supposed to be put on there, but I can't remember.
Or, or we could extend, either start the study session earlier, or extend the length of the study session and start the council meeting.
But see, the whole thing is about, about that, is that we have to start being much more, um, um, respectful of all the people that work. The most people, it's not a hard stop at five o'clock, or, you know, and stuff comes up, but I mean, we can start at, you know, it normally starts at six. I don't know why, I keep thinking it starts at six-thirty.
'Cause I asked for it to start at six-thirty today.
So, I just, um, I mean, I'm fine with it.
What if we move the, the council meeting to start at eight, and start, you know, still start it at six, like we normally do with the study session? Then do those two hours for the study session, and then hit the council meeting. That way, we don't have to rush to go from one to the other.
Well, is it gonna be a study session or a budget session?
So that's what he's, but that's.
But a study session, that would be a budget.
The budget, okay.
So nothing would be on study sessions.
So nothing else would be out discussed, then?
Right.
Well, it's either that or a separate meeting, right? I mean, I could tell you, personally, I can't make anything until after Monday, 'cause I scheduled a trip around this meeting and around the council meeting on Monday, so I'm gone in between.
The rest of the week is doggone for me.
What you do Monday?
I'll see. I mean, I can, I personally can be here at five, five-thirty for a meeting, but that has to be the great, okay.
No, it's not gonna work. Five, five-forty-five, but not, not five, no.
Any else for Monday?
I'm fine with Monday.
So, just know that Monday will be a, a late, um, meeting. I will also, um, offer up to pay for, uh, a dinner for a council, because it's gonna be a long dinner, I mean, long dinner. You know what I'm thinking about right now?
Let's make it a long dinner, and a short meeting.
It will be a long dinner, and a long meeting.
So, is this going to be study session that it's added to, or is it gonna be added after business is done at, on the regular meeting, and then it ends out?
Do you know, off the top of your head, what needs to be on the study session for Monday?
I do not, right off the top of my head.
I think it should be for the study session.
Yeah, and study session six to eight, or you had mentioned that?
I personally, I would say do six to eight, and then.
That only gives us thirty minutes.
Gives us two hours.
Whoa, she's saying like, seven-thirty, the meeting are.
Oh, right, but I.
Right, but then start the regular meeting at eight o'clock.
No, I'm saying that only gives us thirty minutes, the difference is from seven-thirty to eight.
Right, but it gives us, gives us an additional thirty minutes, and that gives us two hours.
I just think that's kinda, well, that's up to you, I think it's late for, um, residents to be able to see, um, the actual, what's being passed, but that's up to you.
I'm down for whatever.
And so keep it six to seven, and seven-thirty, keep that, if we need more time, we need more time, after another day.
You mean a continuation after we finish business at the meeting?
We could do that too, and that way we're not, that way.
If we absolutely have, during, we're not.
That makes sense.
Prolonging residents' meetings.
And if we somehow finish early, we're not sitting around nibbling our thumbs for a half an hour before the meeting starts, so.
Truth. So I think we got a lot of business out of here also. I'm fine with that, just to make it for Monday.
Okay.
Um, and so we will do, my thoughts are, you do the, um, study session and the meeting in the council chambers on Zoom, right? Okay, thank you. Alright, so, um, I wasn't expecting to get out of here that early, and I had to figure out how to fill this.
Well, I guess one, just, just one question, I would just say, make sure that every, does anybody have anything, I mean, I know we, we're gonna have to see the updated numbers, but any, does anybody have anything else left that's not reflective of the numbers? You know, like, we need to add another person, or, yeah, 'cause, 'cause we could still talk about those if there are any. And I just flipped your mind a little bit, but.
I think, I think she would just need to, just let her know what she wants, let her just work on that, and then we can go from there.
If you have any other questions, um, if you don't wanna discuss them tonight, you know, send them to me, and I'll try to get this out in the next couple of days too, so that you can have longer to look at it, and get any questions by Friday, so I can, as soon as possible.
I would appreciate maybe going through where we have increases, and just kinda giving a rationale for, you know, what those increases are.
You wanna do it now?
No, 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 'cause I'm, I, I don't know how it's gonna shape out, go through that.
Can we, can we put a threshold on it, so she's not giving every increase, like, maybe increases over five hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, most of the ones I'm looking at are two thousand, four thousand, ten thousand. I can't find that page, but you had a page with, like, a wish list?
It's on the back page, is it the back page?
Yeah.
Is that the?
Capital.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's the very back page?
Next to the back page, yeah, on the inside of the back.
Did that change? Did you add things, or take anything off from the original?
No, that's all the same.
Yeah, again, for me, the really important thing is making sure we know what the general fund number is, because that really helps put everything else into perspective.
Alright, um, is, do you wanna have anything else on council?
This is going through the section, or no?
Was that just for reference, or?
Well, it, it's something that will come to council for, um, approval at the end of June, when we do, um, the budget hearing, but this is, uh, the capital improvement plan that Planning Commission has gone through thoroughly, and they held a public hearing, and these are their recommendations. Again, this is a wish list, these are things to consider adding, to, you know, look at expenses that may or may not make it in, um, I have not placed everything in the budget, because we just don't have the money for everything. Um, if you look at, uh, starting on page sixteen, I know the beginning pages kind of explain what a capital improvements plan is, the process behind it, the thought, um, and then pages, what is it? Pages thirteen through fifteen just list out the inventory of things, that if we could do this, is what we would do. Pages sixteen and on give the reason behind, uh, why those are in the capital improvement plan, um, and the thought behind, um, there are things at the Department of Public Services, the building there, that we just keep kicking down the road, kicking down the road, kicking down the road. Again, we don't have funding for things, um, but in their building alone, um, their roof is getting really bad, their bathrooms are really bad down there, um, and their dump truck, uh, actually, um, has no floor panel in it, so that's, you know, we should be looking to see at the very bare minimum if we could find a used dump truck to be able to replace that with, 'cause that's not safe for the guys, that's, that's a real safety issue. Going on to, um, page twenty-three, um, police, you'll see that there are things in there, um, that are, uh, the power DMS annual accreditation subscription is in there, um, for this year. There's the in-car video system replacement, their G-Tech, um, that they're looking at for twenty-seven thousand, and the estimated cost for the ballistic flight carrier upgrade for active shooter situations, those are the, the vests that they wear for that. Um, those are in the, uh, in the budget this year already. Um, going over to roads, um, local roads, uh, the El Dorado, uh, that is on there for sixty thousand, and then the Southfield, uh, road resurfacing from eleven to twelve mile, um, the road commission is going to be redoing that, the cost is three-quarters of a million dollars, somewhere in there, um, and the city's portion for that is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, um, using tri-party funding. So, just so you guys are aware of that.
So why does the police say estimate it costs seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand? That's the total cost?
Yeah, there, the ROC raised the estimate between five-hundred thousand and seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, um, and we're responsible for twenty percent of that.
Right, maybe our portion is put in there, 'cause it looks like we're responsible for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of that.
Yeah, I'll have to ask on that.
I say, a, a few of the others, it looked like it was the entire project, and not just our portion.
I'm not sure if it's something that flows through us, and, and we get reimbursed. I've been in communities where we've done road projects, and the city pays the road project, and then is reimbursed by the other entity. Um, we did that with MDOT projects before, where you pay everything out, and then you submit to them, and they reimburse you. I've also, where MDOT pays everything, and then they bill the city for our portion, so I'm not sure what that may be there.
I have a lot more money than we do.
And then, just, just to, um, bring back to your minds, um, we do have the eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollar sanitary retention tank improvements that have been approved, um, so, um, I wanted to go over to, uh, to water. Um, we have in there the, the work on Glenwood, um, from Santa Barbara to Sunset, and La Crosse to Sunset on Blue Field. Um, and then on, uh, San Diego, from Rackham to Bloomfield, and then Lincoln East, Southfield to East City Limits. Those are all, uh, in the bonds. I think Scott told me today, when we were talking, they were looking at moving the project for Lincoln East to next year's budget, to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So that will have to be changed in this, but.
Going back and looking at the SIPs, the Santa, San Diego was supposed to be done in twenty-nineteen, so I'm not sure what happened with that. Got bumped. And then there's a big gap between the, um, water main replacements, twenty-twenty-three to, and then jumps up to twenty-twenty-six, it starts again on page thirty-three. Thirty-three?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure this is what came, uh, from Planning Commission, this was their approved list. Uh, it may be trying to build the fund back up in that, uh, in that fund, so that they have the monies to be able to move forward after that, we may be at a point of depleting at that point in time.
'Cause we gave all that money back, gave it back from, uh, capital improvement bonds, 'cause we didn't spend it. The one points, I think we had originally intended to spend one-point-four or one-point-seven million out of the water and sewer fund, something like that.
You're just gonna take it.
Right, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, so it still should be there. I like to think that we gave it back.
You didn't take it.
I'll ask Suzie that.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions you have on the capital improvement plan?
Yeah, also, can, um, DDA budget, I know it's kind of included, kind of not, can we get a copy of that?
They have to go to their board first, yeah. I believe, I was gonna say, we, we did, we did vote on it at, um, at, at the, the last meeting in April, right?
So it should be.
Didn't we get a, didn't we have a copy of it in our packet recently?
Yeah.
We did?
Yes.
Yeah, like, one of the last few meetings, it was in our packet, I think.
The DDA, the DDA report.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it should be there.
'Cause it was requested for Suzie to be at our meeting, so that's, um, to discuss it.
That wasn't the budget, that was the, the report for the la, for last year, that she came and presented.
I know we did the budget already, but if you just put it back in the packet.
Right, and, and I do know that there were a couple of minor changes that were being made, um, on that budget, that everybody had voted yes on, and Suzie was gonna update that, so I will ask her for the updated DDA.
I see, on their city hall monument sign conversion, where has the, uh, request to have an electronic board come from?
I think that's been on there for years, just a little bit on, yeah. I mean, the, I mean, I, I always laugh when that's on there, and the Planning Commission, I brought this up a couple times, because at least the way the ordinance stands right now, we can't even have it.
Exactly. Did we just deny it to the gas station?
So I think the, the response I always get was, well, you know, from, you know, we could, the ordinance would have to be changed for that to happen, and it would be a great thing, but the ordinance doesn't support it, so. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a six-year plan, five-year plan, I always get mixed up, five, the master plan is five years, it's a six-year. Yeah, it's a six-year plan, you know, like Sue said at the beginning, most of these things just roll from year to year to year, because we don't have the money to do them. So we gotta pick a couple things off of them and do them.
You may have it in one year and determine exactly that, you don't have the money, or the money may, may be left from something else, and you decide, let's pull this one forward from the coming year and do it now.
Right, but I, I know the HAWK signals, that has been, that's in the works, and I'm not sure where that.
That's on page twenty-one.
No, I know. Where that came from, go from one side of crappy buildings to the other crappy buildings, I'm not quite sure what the point of the HAWK signals are, that's a lot of money. Um, page fourteen, ninety thousand dollars for chief and detective bureau vehicles. I guess I, I guess that has a, I guess that has a best schedule, so never mind.
I think I heard something different than what you said, but I heard beer detection vehicle, but.
What page did you run?
Bureau vehicles, chief and detective bureau vehicles, but again, that, sorry, that hasn't been scheduled, so, well, it just says start twenty-twenty-four, so. Are those different than the two new vehicles that we just purchased?
Yes, those are different.
That's for the detective, or, well, the lieutenant, detective lieutenant, and for the police chief, because they are on call twenty-four seven. And they do have city vehicles. And I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here, but I have talked about this last year, and I think that you guys are gonna have to start looking, if you want us to do stuff, um, more stuff, you're gonna have to start looking at doing a.
You're gonna have to start looking at doing a headley override or you're gonna have to look at doing a police millage.
Yeah, I have.
Because the police millages, they take a lot of the governmental money.
We could, we could, with, with three mills for a police department, that would put us around five hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, a year in additional revenue.
Right, and you transfer it over, see. Yeah, the good thing, the good thing about a police millage is it doesn't count, count towards your total.
Right.
So there's a, there's a fifty-nine or fifty-nine or sixty mill max, but yeah, it's something.
Yeah, we were lucky we didn't have to roll it back this year, but next year could be a different story, so it's something that the council should start thinking about.
After we get our house in order, before we ask for more money. Page twenty-two, under Parks and Rec, there's a hundred thousand dollars for each of the parks. And it says project year twenty twenty-three for two of them, for Surack Wood and Municipal Park Plaiscape. Golden Gate is twenty twenty-five. Is there a way that we can do like different things at the parks? We have no outdoor basketball courts at all, anywhere in the city. You know, perhaps rather than duplicating things at multiple places, maybe there's a, we're not that big of a city, maybe, you know, there's one park that's focused on little kid stuff or, you know. Is that something that we can, can look at to better meet some of the needs that aren't being met?
Definitely.
Do you already have these credits? They're working on it. Oh, so that's not guaranteed either. For the parks, no. Page twenty-three, I know there's been talk about this previously, not since we've been here, about the police station remodel or new build. It says there's nowhere to clean uniforms that have been exposed to biohazard material. Is that something that happens often or is that?
It happens more than you think it does. I, I don't have the numbers, but our police officers get exposed to things that, you know, it could be bodily fluids. It, it could be, it's not just hazmat stuff where you think chemicals and that sort of thing. It, it, yeah, blood, bodily fluids, any of those things. And you don't want to tell them, take them home and clean them in your laundry or send them off to the dry cleaner because that's not, that's not safe either, but there's nowhere to store that here.
What are we doing currently? I mean, I, I hope we're doing something. What's, what's happening currently with that, if it, if it's something that happens?
We're looking at you.
Want to talk on that?
Yeah.
Sure.
In reference to the.
They want you to come up to Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. The things that we're exposed to is often because we assist with medical, blood, vomit, urine, feces, things of that nature, it can get on our clothes. And then if we have it, if it's something that's contagious disease, if we went to another house, we could contaminate another household. So right now what we do is we have spare uniforms in our locker and what we do is just, we'd have to change and put it in a trash bag and then the chief would have to figure out how to launder it. And then we take a shower to, to wash anything off, so it's really a makeshift, no way of handling it. It's not a proper way and I'm sure it's not approved by any federal organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Page thirty-one, under water loss and water meters, it said, water loss is expected due to ragged conditions. The rate should typically be closer to twenty percent. I thought that was supposed to be about ten to twelve percent.
Yeah, I know it's higher for older systems, but, but we're, we're, we're doing well. Hopefully it stays that way. It's well underneath the.
Um, any other comments?
Or anything?
No. Um, on the button. So, public comments, I guess that's over. Was there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Christina Schindler, has, has the cost of water in or sewer increased recently?
Yes, uh, water is going up four point three five percent and sewer is two point nine percent.
Starting July first.
Starting July one.
We only increase it with the budget, so it would be July first at any time.
And Brandon Wynn's question is, does the city have a plan for contracting city easement trees for trimming and or removal? DTE has destroyed easement trees, leaving them a hazard to snow slash ice storms. We've also left trees damaged that need proper health cuts for survival.
Um, we do have a tree service that we do work with for trees in the right of way, so that is something that we do have budgeted. And if he wants to reach out to the city, I'd be happy to talk to him.
Yeah, but cardinal, Rob, DTE damaged the trees. DTE should, we should be.
Right, it should be DTE that is, is doing that, but we need to assess what is what first, so.
Yeah, gotta get it reported first.
And then one more comment from Adam Laurie. It's really good to hear you all having a forward-looking conversation about solving city issues and identifying priorities. Rehashing the past, these last two years has not been productive, use of council time and has not benefited the city. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I don't see any other people that is in the audience, so then go to council comments, mayor council comments. I don't have any.
I just want to thank, so, so we, at the last meeting, we talked a little bit again about encroachment issues and we had talked about it, I think, in February. You know, the response was, good response was that, you know, that we're having Bill do an inventory, you know, he's working on doing an inventory. But what I'd like to do is, if other council members agree, is actually put a deadline on that because if we just say, well, he's gonna, you know, develop an inventory, you know, as, as he goes out, you know, it could be six months, a year before we ever do anything if there's no deadline. So, I mean, I, I'd like to propose like the end of July, that gives him three months to hit all the streets, which should be easily doable. I don't know what you guys see, I'll consider.
That's gonna give him two months to do that.
Three months of May, June, July.
Well, I mean, we're already.
We're in May, so.
Well, give him, I'm saying, give him three months. I mean, I mean, I walk the streets in a month, so he's driving, so I mean, it should be pretty.
But you also have to be, um, you know, conscious of.
I get it, I get it.
There's other things that he can do besides just that, so.
Right. You figure you do, he's got three months, that's less than a half a mile a day.
Maybe a little bit more time, like before the fall, before the fall starts maybe, or like September, end of September.
And that's what's gonna happen when he finds all these violations?
Well, it's not, it's not finding violations, it's basically to, to, to get an inventory of what, how big the issue is across the city and then it's gonna be on us to figure out what to do about it. But we can't do anything about it until we know how big of an issue it is, as Scott was saying at the last meeting.
Well, he might have put a dent in it already because hasn't he been tasked with it?
He has been working on that, but he's been working on a whole lot of things, you know, so I, I agree, I think September would be a more reasonable than July. I know you'd like to see it done because it's been on your plate to get completed, but again, in, in the scope of things, September might even be difficult, but at least he can give a good.
Because you want a report and you wanna, and I think you have a good report and status, or not status, but comprehensive report, giving him time to drive around, put it together. I think, you know, in the August, in the beginning of September.
Yeah, I'm fine with end of August. It should be plenty of time.
It should be. Because you can, on the way to a job, you can take three pictures.
I'm, I'm gonna put September, I'm sorry, I'm being a little defiant. I know you want end of August, but I think.
Well, he could always ask for an extension.
Right.
September one.
We're realistic, we're, we're realistic and.
I'm just kidding, I just think that, you know, to be cautious, I know that he's caught out on a lot of other things and that's, hence the reason why I'm saying that. I think that we have to understand what's going on before we just throw out, you know, oh, you can do it by July and we don't really have a clue of exactly what a day-to-day in, in the life looks like, so.
Because he's out a good portion of the day already, so doing motor enforcement.
Anything else?
And other things.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of things. Uh, the Letherton Village Women's Club June luncheon, their annual luncheon is gonna be Wednesday, June seventh at eleven thirty here in City Hall. The city is graciously allowing the club to hold the luncheon here. The cost is forty dollars per person and they would like reservation and check deadline is May twenty-fourth. Check should be made, should be given to Mary Ann Smythe. If anyone has any questions, you can reach out to me. You don't have to be a member.
I'm sorry, which, which luncheon was that, did you say?
Women's.
Women's club. And then I also saw in the upcoming projects, asphalt driveway, flagging driveways, whatever. As somebody who experienced it, I would really like to urge you to reconsider continuing that. It did nothing positive. At, at best, it was something kind of pointless. At worst, the sidewalk is sinking. Asphalt is more absorbent than cement, so anyway, I would ask that that be reconsidered for other residents. They said the sidewalk's sinking because we're moving compacted dirt that's been there for a very long time and the fill that they put in is not, not going to support, support it, so.
That's from a resident or that's from your house?
I, they made, made that happen at my house. I saw that it's on the list for the next projects, coming up, this year's projects.
I was just curious on how many residents actually have that, that issue. I mean, just, again, show the work of how many residents actually have it besides just your house.
Well, we, there were five of us on my block, so.
So the, I'm just saying for the whole city, it's only five people?
But, no, I don't know. The first, the first year, there was, there, there was no one, then all of a sudden.
The rule of in and last year's project.
Okay.
What happened to the plaques?
Lions Club is taking their stuff down. Anything else that is here, they said can be disposed of, they do not want. So if you guys see anything you want to take with you, feel free to do that, but they are done.
What'd you say?
They're disbanding.
Yeah, I knew that, that is, oh, no.
Okay.
I put that in one of my weekly updates.
No, I knew that, but I was just wondering where the plaques, that's all, I was just wondering, they're taking the plaques too?
They're taking all their stuff that they want.
All right, I, um.
Oh, can I just make one more announcement? Just a reminder for trivia night, Friday, May nineteenth, check-in is at five thirty, trivia starts at six. I hope everyone will consider coming out. I think it's gonna be a really fun night and we are starting to pick up and fill tables, so.
Bought a table too?
You bought one? Yay, see?
So tables are still available?
Yes, but ASAP because it's starting to generate some interest.
And we did check on the Eventbrite stuff. It has to be done for each event. We can't just have one static Eventbrite link. It has to be created for each one. So I've tasked Kelda to work with.
Eventbrite?
I was, I was like, something's going on the nineteenth, but that's the MML events weekender, that's why I, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't know anything about Eventbrite, but if somebody knows how to use it.
Well, I, I've tasked Kelda to work with Susie to learn how to do that and then she'll be your go-to person to get those set up.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Um, it seems like I'm forgetting something, but I can't remember it, so I'll just leave it at that. Anyone else have anything else? We are gonna, um, going to meet again on Monday, May fifteenth? Fifteenth?
Fifteenth, yeah.
Fifteenth.
Fifteen, yeah.
May fifteenth, I'll put it out there now. I will be flying back in that day, so hopefully I will be here by the time, so. I will say we're adjourned. Thanks for coming.